If everybody is ready, let's, uh, it is the appointed time. Good morning, I'm going to call to order the Washto County Board of County Commissioners meeting for December 20th. It is 10:00 a.m., the appointed time. We will start with a salute to the flag. Commissioner Jung, would you lead us today?
I'm gonna say it like fifth grade. Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Clerk, would you call roll for us, please?
Chair Von Hartung.
Here.
Vice Chair Alexis Hill.
Here.
Bob Lucy is absent. Kitty Jung, present.
Jeanne Harmon.
Here.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Mary Canderas.
Here.
And I am Chief Deputy Clerk Kathy Smith. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item three, public comment?
Item three is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, would you please call public comment?
Ms. Elise Weatherly, please.
Good morning, Elise Weatherly. Where did everybody go? Where did all the flowers go? Okay, what I want to try to do is get as much as I can in three minutes, it's very difficult. Um, we'll take the death penalty off the table if you tell us where the bodies are hidden. Have you guys ever heard that before? Is that like truth or fiction? Is it like from true crime? Is it like from Law &amp; Order? It's actually real. A lot of the crime shows that I watch are based on reality. The death penalty is a negotiable item. I think it's worth keeping in play. I think that Richard Allen Davis, when he was sentenced to death for kidnapping, raping, although he burned the body so you couldn't have the evidence of that, and murdering a 12-year-old, I think that he should have been put to death. I think monsters, like some people on these crime shows say, should be put to death. All right? Some people are wicked, and some people call them monsters, and some people say, well, they were just having a bad day. You know, they didn't mean to kidnap, rape, and murder a 12-year-old? Gosh, let's keep the man alive. What I will say is the longer a person is kept alive, the greater their fines, fees, and penalties add up to. Believe it or not, it's what happens. Do you think that Richard Allen Davis is not afraid of dying? Of course he's afraid of dying. He knows exactly what's gonna happen. He doesn't think, well, it'll just disappear, nothing will be held into account, like certain people think. We know better than that. So what about music? People think that I'm just this musician, right? No, I'm a theologian. That's what I loved most about my life. I loved Infineum, I loved IBM's mid-frame systems, not mainframe, I loved RPG. I didn't love Cobal so much, but I know what I could do. And what I can do is I can check things out and see, are they telling the truth? What about this? Stab through the heart and you're to blame. You give love a bad name. That's a song, right? That applies to so many churches in this community. You gave love a bad name, you stabbed me in the heart, you took my wallet, you know, and then you didn't think anything about it. You hurt me. Okay, how about backstabbers? The backstabbers. I keep asking, um, the former drummer, or the former, my former financial guy who's a drummer, please get into the studio. Please, you and Carolyn Dolan, get into the studio and sing Backstabber. How about I'll Be Watching You? All right, is that a song that's real? Whatever you do, I'll be watching you. Is that God? Does he watch everything we do and keep a record of it? Guess what? He does. He's the best accountant there ever was. He keeps records that cannot be refuted. He's not gonna say when I stand before him, well, you were just having a bad day, you didn't mean to hurt those people. And I was gonna read to you what my responsibility is from the Bible, don't have time. My responsibility is to pay my taxes, so I've picked taxes over Tom, because I had to, and do what's right. Okay, so you guys, you need to do what's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Commissioner-elect Clark.
Good morning, Michael Clark, Commissioner-elect, District 2. I've got a couple of issues with a couple of items on the agenda. Just like some clarification, I'd like to hear in the public, when you discuss the matters before you vote, in particular, 5A, point 2. I'd like to hear a little bit more about that before it's voted on. And then item number nine. I'd like to know a little bit more about the RFP that was awarded, or sent, put out for that. I'd like to know when the ads will run, what other agencies were involved, and I'd like to know why are we spending over $300,000 to change a, uh, a name of a department? Seems a bit excessive. I think it's a, a bit excessive and a waste of taxpayer money. If you're gonna change the name of a department, just change it. Let it be, you've got your own internal PR firm here, let them make that change and make the people aware of it. But, uh, a lot of money to change the name of a, of a department. And in light of, at the Abbey Agency, both working for, uh, Mr. Hartman, Hartung, and Bob Lucy in the past, it, it looks a little, uh, has the appearance of some impropriety. So I'd like to hear a little bit more about that before that's voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Jim McNamara.
Welcome, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me out. By way of explanation, I'm a volunteer in and out of the NV Care's campus, Nevada Care's campus, and at the VA, homeless outreach. I read the minutes sometimes about, uh, the projects in motion and ideas like fining people for camping. And I gotta admit, I don't have the big picture, but I see it from ground level, and I would ask you to consider a couple of things. One, I'm in there quite a bit, and I don't really see a lot of folks like yourselves or city managers that come down there frequently and spend a fair amount of time. I do get to interact with the, with the folks there, and it's a, it's a sad, sad commentary, I guess, but for all the money that's been expended there and the efforts that have been made, we still seem to be, and I don't mean this to cast blame, failing our homeless quite a bit. Uh, I ask that anybody reconsider fining people for camping outside until at some point we have enough housing, uh, permanent supportive housing, to get those people off the street. Otherwise, criminalizing their existence and their survival i- is not gonna help anybody. So I ask that we might consider, uh, spending time down there as a group to really interact with the, uh, popul- population there, and also the, the fine people that you've recruited to work there, to really get a more granular idea of what the, what the significant problems are and how, how they might be addressed in a more timely manner. I understand we have 3,800 public housing units, and somewhere around 730 are currently vacant because of barriers to entry. If we're in fact in a housing crisis, I recommend we declare an emergency and hold some of those rules in abeyance so we can get people out of that campus into some kind of housing and get more of these people that are living in their cars and on the street into the Care's campus. We can't do it all at the same time. We need to move people into housing. Thank you for your consideration. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
No one else has signed in.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number four, please?
Item four is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have any such items, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chair, this morning, uh, I would like to introduce to you our new government affairs liaison. She's in the audience today. Her name is Cadence Matievich. Cadence, could you stand up, please? This is Cadence's first day as a county employee, and we welcome her to this important role as we get ready for the legislative session next year. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. Before I allow other commissioners, I'd, I'd like to welcome, and, and I've always had a hard time with this. Is it Matievich or Matievich?
Matievich.
Matievich, thank you so much. Uh, you have a longstanding history in this community and, and have done some really great work, and I think Washto County is blessed to, to have you on staff, so thank you so much. That takes us to the vice chair. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To our public commenter's point, Mr. McNamara, I, I just wanted to see if we could get a presentation, Mr. Manager, on, um, where we are with, on the, on the Built-for-Zero model, and, um, my understanding is that the barriers, um, for entry into many of those shelters are by nonprofits, and that the county cannot force them to, um, make a change of their rules, but I'd like to get more information, um, on that, on that for the public and also for the board. And I really appreciate the public commenter's passion for our homeless population. I also would like to bring up, uh, uh, snow removal in, uh, Incline Village in Crystal Bay. I wanna thank our staff. I know they've been working across, like, around the clock to, um, to work on the snow removal, and I know there are concerns with pathway, um, clearing, and it's something that we are aggressively working on, um, at Washto County, and hopefully we'll see a, a budget request from our, uh, Community Services Department on that. But if you are having issues with snow removal, please, um, reach out to Washto 311, um, so we can make sure we document that, um, and get that fixed. And, um, I just wanted to say it's been a joy to be on this board with everyone this year. I've, um, I feel like we've gotten so much work done, um, for our community, and I thank all of you for your service, um, and really look forward to 2023, and thank you, Commissioner Jung. It's been fun.
Anybody else? Okay, let me jump in. Um, and I, and I look forward to hearing about the housing also. I'm, I was unaware that there are 730 units, so if, if that is, if that is the correct number, I'd certainly like to understand, um, why and, and what those barriers are. So for me, a couple of different things. I asked staff some time ago to, um, initiate a speed study on Omni. Um, I still haven't seen that. That's the lower end that would go from La Posada to, uh, East Sky Ranch, and I'm hopeful that, that we can, um, have something in place. And then, of course, I'd also like to see a study from East Sky Ranch up to Sunset Springs, because that's another downhill run, and, and I don't know how we can control the, the speeds in those two sections, but, um, it's, uh, it's very important. And then, um, and Mr. Smith, maybe we can circle back on this. I continue to get complaints on Sunset Springs and the condition of Sunset Springs, and I don't know whether that is the all-light, uh, material that that road was built with. And if it is, um, like, I guess the, the question comes back to, uh, this board of how do we fund, at, and at what time do we fund the replacement of that road? And I believe that's all I have. Anyone else? Okay? Um, I will close item number four. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item five?
Item five is consent. Uh, these are items 5A1 through 5C1, and I have no changes, Mr. Chair.
Let me, we had a request. Madam Clerk, can you give us some information on 5A2, the communications?
The communications and reports are just financial reports and statements that are received to the clerk's office. We put them on the agenda to make them public so that we can make them part of the, the record.
Okay.
For the board.
All right. Anyone else?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Take one for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on item number five?
We do not.
I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number six.
Item six is a recommendation to acknowledge receipt of the Washto County Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, Auditor's Report, and Report on Internal Control of the Fiscal Year Ended June 30th, 2022, as presented. Approve the appropriation of $35,735,221 for the fiscal year 2023 budget, um, consisting of $19,241,593 for purchase order encumbrances committed in fiscal year 2022, and $16,493,628 for spending of restricted contributions and fees, and authorize the comptroller to proceed with distribution of the ACFR for public record as required by law. And in chambers this morning, Mr. Chair, is our comptroller Kathy Hill.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Kathy Hill, Washto County Comptroller for the record. Uh, I'd like to just bring up a few financial highlights from fiscal year '22 and the activity for Washto County. The county's general fund unrestricted balance increased by a little over $18 million, and the fund balance for child protective services increased by $4.6 million. Washto County has, uh, five major funds and had an additional audit for a major program in the single audit, and for your information, the county has a financial audit performed as well as a single audit, which is the audit of grant awards. Washto County also had over $72 million in federal award expenditures compared to $41 million in fiscal year '21. A special thank you to Bob Andrews and the Washto County Accounting Team for their continuing to work with the new auditing firm BDO and perform the accounting rules and financial reporting for the county, resulting in the annual comprehensive financial report, which is a very complex document. However, for ease of reading, I would recommend, if you choose to read it, to look at the notes and the required supplementary, uh, information. That'll give you all that you need. And this year, Washto County again received an unmodified or clean opinion on its audit. And to further that is Heidi from BDO.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Heidi Schuman, um, Audit Senior Manager at BDO. For the record, uh, we completed our audit of the Washto County Books and Records, um, for the year ended June 30th, uh, 2022. Our opinion was unmodified, basically, which means it's clean. And we released that report on December 7th. Uh, we also issued a clean opinion, unmodified opinion, on the schedule of the expenditure of awards on December 7th as well. Um, once again, this year, it was our second year auditing the county and management's cooperation. Bob and Kathy and the rest of her team were excellent and amazing in putting up with us. So, still learning the county every day, so, uh, we ask lots of fun questions and they help us answer those questions. So, um, we did, like Kathy said, you could read the notes to the financials. Uh, there were no significant changes to the processes or accounting assumptions, um, used in the financial statements. The only exception to that was there was a new, um, GASB. It's a financial accounting pronouncement, um, that was issued for GASB 87, which is leases, and they implemented that with no issue. We did have, um, two, um, uncorrected misstatements. That means that they were not material to the financial statements, but we didn't have any corrected misstatements. The two that were, um, not corrected are related to a, the pension, the state pension plan, the Nevada Public Employee Benefit Program. Um, we're, they're going to fix that, um, next year. It was reported as a fiduciary fund, but now belongs in the general fund, so that will be corrected in fiscal year 2023. And then there was a small grant receivable, um, amount that had gotten over-recorded, but nothing material. We also issued, like I said, a clean opinion over the, um, schedule of federal awards. We did have one finding, um, with regards to that, and it was on the program for emergency rental assistance, and it was just around monitoring the city of Reno and their housing department. But other than that, everything else was nice and clean, and I very much enjoyed working with Kathy and the team. And we'll be back again next year.
Thank you.
Do this all over again.
Any questions, Commissioners?
We do. Commissioner Jung.
I don't have a question, I have a statement. I, uh, wanna thank you for taking care of the good work of our tax dollars here and making sure that they're always accountable, and I have to put, because you know, I'm competitive. We also have the highest bond rating in the whole state, and I'm proud of that. As a Commissioner, 15 years and four months going through some of the worst days of our lives, 2007, 8, 9, 10. And thank you for maintaining that bond rating, and if it, if you don't think it matters to you, it sure as heck does, because any major, uh, uh, task we take on in which we have to sell our bonds, we get more back from, and we pay less interest. So your money goes further, just like in your, your common, uh, checking account. And thank you for the audit, and thank you for keeping us, uh, uh, with integrity with so much money, the, the largest government in northern Nevada, and most importantly, for the reputation, because many, many, many people use our bond rating too, to increase their ability to, uh, the school district, our CBA, there's many that depend on us doing good work with our money, and congratulations always, since, for 15 years and four months, we've always won the Cashman Good Governments Award for our financial acuity, conservativeness, and most of all, what has always been my driving force, who knows what it'll be next, but to make sure people are employed here with, uh, money that they can count on, uh, wealth that they can continue to generate in their professional career, and we couldn't do that if it wasn't for the hall monitors, as I like to call, the comptroller, telling us to put on our seat belts and sit back and be quiet while she manages what our money is. So I appreciate you so much, Madam Controller, and I appreciate the type of personality that it takes to keep, you wouldn't want me in charge of that, because I'd be like, are the lights off? I think I paid that. That would be me. So I'm really, really, I'm more thankful for people with your skill set, um, than any other skill set, because it's a skill set that I know I could take to my, my constituents, and they could trust for the numbers that I had. So that, that's huge for an elected official, and I thank you. And I thank you for coming in and learning us and, and, and making sure that Ms. Hill is up to date, which she always is. These are the conscientious people of our staff, and you know details. I don't love details, so I just adore you so much. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner, and good luck to you. I've enjoyed working with you as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Uh, Vice Chair Hill, no relation.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Hill, and, um, I'm very impressed with, um, you know, how well you did, you and your team, um, at many challenging new programs, and I think that, um, the report that we all received on our desk, and I think Commissioner Herman has it, it's like, on her, yes, very big, thick. Where can citizens find this online so they can?
It is on the comptroller department's internet site. Once you've allowed permission to release it, it'll be available there.
Oh, wonderful.
It is a great team effort.
Yes, so, and it tells the story of the county, I think, and so, um, I think it is worth, you know, if folks, um, take the time and, and read at least, um, that summary at the, at the top, it will give you an idea of what we've been up to. So, thank you for that, and, uh, looking forward to sharing it with the community.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments by my fellow Commissioners. That's a hard act to follow. Just, all I can say is, well done. Thank you so much. Um, and, and as for you, Kathy, I, uh, and you know this, I depend on you constantly. I'll call you, and I, it, it is astounding to me, your recall and your ability to remember numbers, and I have, um, and, and this is not spoken in the pejorative, cross-checked them, and I've never found you to be wrong when you told me something. Ever. And it's, but it's amazing, off the cuff, and it's not, it's not like it's about. It's, it's usually a very exact number, and, um, and it's, it, it, again, your recall is, is amazing.
Thank you.
Um, so it doesn't, I'm not surprised, again, with all due respect, that we got a clean audit.
Yep.
This does, this does not surprise me with our, uh, the leadership and our staff. Okay, um, this is for possible action. Uh, okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Vice Chair Hill. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, I believe unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Uh, where is Commissioner Herman?
Was that a yes vote from Herman?
She's not, she's not even showing up on the, on the screen.
It didn't capture it, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. We've, we've noted that for the record.
Okay, do, um, okay. Do we need to have tech come down and restart a pad? Okay. Are we okay? Clerk? Madam Clerk? Okay. Okay, very good. Um, this is, I'm gonna open up item, that, that takes us now from item six to item seven and eight. Essentially, we'll open them up simultaneously, um, but we have to approve seven, uh, prior to, so, uh, we have to, we have to, my bad, we have to approve eight first. Seven first.
Seven first.
Okay. Um, why don't we just open up, why don't we just do the augmentation and then hear item number eight?
All right, so item seven is a recommendation to approve resolution, Resolution R22 dash 170, to augment the utilities fund in the amount of $43,800,000 to increase fiscal year 2023 budget authority for the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion Project. Guaranteed maximum price 48, um, of construction manager at risk management, at risk agreement, and direct the comptroller to make the necessary budget amendments.
Okay. Mr. Smith, is there anything that you'd like to add on item number seven? This is just an, an augmentation of the fund. Where do these, where do these funds come from, Mr. Smith? Is this general fund or is this rate pair?
Uh, no, for the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects. And to answer the Chair's question, all the utility funding comes from the utility. There is no general fund, funding that supports the expansion of the STEMWORF project.
Perfect. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay. Um, I'll bring it back to the board, um, and looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Resolution R22 dash 170.
Okay, I'll second it. We have a motion and, um, and a second. Motion by Hill, second by Hartung. Uh, is there any other discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Commissioner Jung was not at the...
Aye by aye.
She, she's an aye. She was not at the, the dais, but she is in the chamber. And Madam Clerk, you did, you did hear the, the aye. Okay? Perfect. Okay. That takes us now, Mr. Smith, to item number eight.
Item eight is a recommendation to authorize MWH Constructors and KG Walters Construction, a joint venture as the construction manager at RISC or C Mar, and approve guaranteed maximum price agreement 48 to construct the remaining plant expansion, uh, package identified as part of the South Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility 2020 Expansion Project in the amount of $43,754,555.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mr. Smith, I, first of all, I wanna commend you. You only asked for 43,8, and then you're only gonna, you're gonna spend 43,754,555. It's impressive that you're gonna be able to keep those numbers within about 45,000.
Yeah, um, for the record, Dwayne Smith, Director of Engineering Capital Projects and Chair, that's, uh, I've got a slide a little bit later on in the presentation, you might wanna reserve that comment.
Please. Okay. The floor is yours, Mr. Smith.
So in consideration of both items, number seven, the budget augmentation for the utility fund for '23, and also for this award of our final GMP contract with the C Mar, um, the Chair and the Manager asked for a brief update on our STEMWORF expansion project. So I put together a few slides here, and I'll just talk, talk quickly about our, our project, kind of the status of where we're at, and what the funding is. So just a bit of context, um, Washto County is an owner and responsible for three wastewater treatment plants. The STEMWORF, uh, plant in the South Truckee Meadows is our largest plant. It was originally constructed in 1990- It was originally constructed in 1991 and since that time, we've gone through a lot of changes at the facility and those changes are in response to the demands of new development. I would just point quickly to a couple of things under the major improvements, that 2016 biosolids treatment. This was a project which we ceased to send our biosolids to the City Reno and City of Sparks facility, TomWORF, and we now treat and manage all of our own biosolids at our facility, so we have complete control of our facility. Just a couple of key points as you're looking through some of these bullet points. Up here, you know, STEMWORF is a regional facility. We provide wastewater treatment services to not just unincorporated Washoe County, but also to the City Reno. As with any of these projects, staff continues to make the appropriate decisions to support the expansion of the facility. We have a great record, as you can see under the major improvement section. These, really, all these efforts are in response to the demands of new development. And we also are very sensitive to and maintain our environmental protections. And a lot of this project was focused on the water quality that we produce to benefit our reclaimed water quality and again, our environment. And of course, at the end of the day, we have to maintain our permit requirements with the state of Nevada. The project is long. These are not short projects. We started our planning and pre-design back in 2017. We knew that with the pace of development, we needed to be out in front of development and prepared. I was not going to stand in front of you asking for your forgiveness why we did not have treatment capacity within the STEMWORF. So we start early. You also notice that the substantial completion is 2025. So we've been in this project for a few years now. We've still got a couple of, almost three to go. With any of these large projects, our focus is on funding. And as the Chair asked me earlier, the project is 100% funded through the utility. We're very focused on schedule. We're very focused on our design, making sure that we incorporate best practices into our design. Our construction, you know, this is an important thing. We selected the C-MAR project delivery method to take advantage of schedules, to take advantage of really the value engineering opportunities that go along with this type of project. We could have hard bid the project, had one large lump sum project, and potentially would have suffered a lot of issues with that. C-MAR is a partnership, not just with the designers, but also with the contractors. These are our partners in the process. And I, I'll notice, I'll put a quick note there that startup, I didn't put it on the slide, but startup is when we start the new facilities and all the commissioning activities that go along with that. That process is between six and 10 months in and of itself. Staff continues to plan and execute these projects. And I would do a quick shout out to our design staff. Alan Jones has led that effort. Our project manager, Megan Sizelove, Anna Capital Projects, has done a fantastic job herding cats, I'll say, for a project of this magnitude. This is the, kind of some, well, this is a summary of the eight GMPs, the contracts for this project over time. So you can see those eight GMPs, GMP 1, which started with the reservoir liner where we store our treated effluent in the winter time when we are not exporting it for the benefit of the community, all the way through 4B, which is the final construction package, it's $43 million award. The total project estimate is $122 million. Again, all funding comes from the utility, not from the general fund. The total project is considerably more than what we first proposed. Of course, we have a lot of things that have influenced that, COVID, procurement, elevated costs for labor, all the supply issues that we see. So we've been very diligent through a series of value engineering or VE workshops. These VE workshops focus on efficiencies in construction. So we listen to our contractor partners to tell us what is a better way to do things. And then our designers capture those recommendations into the designs. We focus on the items that we need, not the items that we want or the items that we wish for. So this is very much a needs-based approach. And certainly, as with any project, we've had to make a couple of cuts along the way, delay some of those items, and we'll, we'll take advantage of later needs to then initiate those, those projects, those pieces. One of the things that I was really excited about this project is that we moved away from an older technology, a typical oxidation ditch technology, to a five-stage Bardenfo treatment process. So the old oxidation ditch technology that we had, 100, 120 years old, has served us well at the STEMWORF. And it's the same technology that we use at our other two treatment facilities. But when we were contemplating this project back in 2017, we went through a, through a rigorous process to make a decision if we should change our treatment processes or not. And we did. We went with the five-stage Bardenfo. It's this technology that's been around about 30 to 40 years and is being definitely used in a majority of the new expansions that we see across the United States and in Europe. The advantage of the Bardenfo is that it has an enhanced nutrient removal process. So this helps us remove phosphorus and nitrogen. These are some of the key impacters, key constituents that impact our reclaimed water quality. The Bardenfo process, it may look complicated, and I put the simplified version on the screen. It's definitely more complicated. There's a lot more control, though, that goes into the process. So we utilize a lot more technology in the process, proven technology, not new, but proven technology. And it's also more efficient. So this helps us reduce our, will help us reduce our operating costs on a per-unit basis as we move into the future. So we expect to see better solids destruction through the process. We bet, we expect to see lower chemical costs, again, per unit. Now, our flows are increasing, so our chemical costs go up. Our flows are increasing, our electrical costs go up. But on a per-unit basis, that's what I'm talking about. The other advantage of Bardenfo is that it's flexible. So as we move into the future, we're not constrained with an old technology. So if there are other demands that are put on us from a reclaimed water standpoint, for instance, or maybe there's new permit requirements that come down from the state or from the EPA, it gives us much more flexibility. So the decision was made to change our process. That's one of the reasons why, at this time, it's, it is an expensive project. So I just wanted to thank you for your consistent support in the utility and certainly, Commissioner Jung, over the years. Thank you. I want to reaffirm our commitment, the utility to the environment and to our processes. So I put our, put that little green box down in the, in the bottom. That is a real strong commitment that we use in our decision-making processes to make sure that we're not just finding the lowest cost solution, but it's the best solution for the benefit of our community. There's more to come. In the new year, I will be bringing more projects and more processes for your consideration. And so until then, I want to wish you a happy holidays.
Mr. Smith, thank you so much. And Commissioners, I asked for this to be, this presentation, because it's obviously, Commissioner Jung, you're shaking your head. It's near and dear to my heart. But, and I'll, I see you, you are signed in first, Commissioner Jung, and then Commissioner Hill, and then I'll, I'll take up the rear.
I just want to bring to the public's attention that, you know, many times since I've been in office, that we hear, "Public-private partnerships are the way to go, public-private partnerships." Well, this is a public-private partnership. And I think it's so fortunate for staff to get to sit down with the architects and the people that are going to build this to learn what is the new best practice. And you know, we can't do that if we're always in our own vacuum. So I think this has been a perfect example of working together rather than one fleecing the other, because that's what we learned with the overcharges and the escalation. So this, this comes from staff recommendation and best practices because it truly is a partnership to get the best project we can with the money we have and the real constraints we have. So I really appreciate that. And I know it's a new way to do it, but you're doing great at it. And I get great feedback from it too, and even from your staff, what they learn and what the contractors learn from us. Because remember, the scale we have is very different than when you go into a brand-new community and start building this. So, and finally, I would be remiss, the Chairman has made this his area of expertise. He chose that himself, has won all the water reclamation awards you can win, even at the national level, which I'm so proud of because we live in such a resource-constrained basin when it comes to water. So the more that we can do to get the most out of the flush or what goes down the drain. You've been a leader, Mr. Chairman, and it is well-known around the state and in the country. When I went to the National League of Cities meeting a few years ago before COVID with Commissioner, with Councilwoman Weber as her plus-one, they knew about us and they knew about you. And so it's, it's, why not? It's just like when I meet people that were born and raised here and you're not a good skier. What happened to you in your childhood? You should be an excellent skier. You should be Olympic-grade skier. Same with water expertise. We should be the leader of what to do with reclaimed water. And our Chairman did that all by his silly self. He didn't need to go learn this. He didn't need to march in here. And like you, Vice Chairwoman Hill, he found it, he funded it, he made the case. We seeded clouds. We went on a great experiment. And I truly believe that's what counties can do, to use that power and that great relationship that I know my replacement, Commissioner-elect Maude Luce Garcia will bring even more of that, working with the Chairman in terms of making these relationships with the university as well. Before, we always, it was town and gown. We stayed off on our side and, and that was really the Chairman that got into UNR, helped us do the innovations, Nevada, to make sure that these PhDs and fellows that are here had work to do, but more importantly, were get paid to do the work. Last time I checked, we still have to pay rent. So, and I know, Mr. Smith, sometimes us Commissioners get you on wild tangents, but I can tell too for you, when they come here, how proud you are, that you're a part of that UNR partnership. And I think it's one of the most impactful things we've ever done as a county in terms of creating a different type of synergy, public-private, university. And Commissioner Hartung, when he was in the chair, was the, he was the leader in telling us, "We're going to invest this money. We don't know for sure how it's going to work." But I've done, I went to the conferences and he's right. It's turned out to be the best practice. So that always makes me so proud that we work on a commission that we empower each other to become the subject matter expert, because believe it or not, we can't all be experts of everything. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. And you, you really need to wear that moniker because you're known for that. And you know this big mouth, the town crier. I tell everybody too, because it's, it matters. And a lot of people don't realize the connection there, but it's so much bigger than even that, just the relationships that we've built and the consciousness of this board and management of how important water is and that we're not going to let one drop go unless we can recycle it as many times as possible. And thank you for your leadership and your engineering and putting up with a Commissioner that came to you and said, "Should I still go to dry cleaning? Because I think I'm paying a tax on dry cleaning." And you said, "No." Because if you notice our bills, our property taxes, he showed me, where I do reclamation for old dry cleaners that we have done. So thank you for using your big brains to try to come up with some solutions with all of our ideas. I really appreciate it. And you've done, you are known for that as well. So thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Commissioner. Very kind words. Vice Chair Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I agree with Commissioner Jung, wholeheartedly. We have a great team and thank you so much for leading the charge on this. I would love to take a tour. I actually have not been out there. And so I'd love to see what we're up to. So if we could try to get that on the books, that would be amazing. And I have so many conversations with people in the community and our journalists and media about sewer. Sewer is on top of mind for people. And so I, people are paying attention to this issue. And as you know, I really want to see that westward expansion of our reclaimed water so we can ensure that our golf courses and different parks are not reliant on the Truckee River. And so I can't wait to get an update on that. Do you have any timing on that? Because I know the community is like, "When are you going to get the purple pipe to us?"
Through the Chair, some of the things that we'll see in the next year.
Wonderful. I'm so excited about that and for this board to weigh in on how we should do that. I think that's going to be a big discussion for us next year and thank you for your work and looking forward to the tour.
So I'll, I'll jump in here. I have taken the tour a couple of times, actually. The first time I took it, I accused them of it not being a real sewer plant. No. It is, it is a tidy, tidy plant. It is, it's really, truly amazing. It is the, it is the state of the art in our region. Commissioner Jung, you brought up something extremely important, how constrained we are as a state of resources, except for mining and mineral. That's, that's the one thing we have. But we don't have a lot of forests, we don't have a lot of water, we don't have a lot of things that many other states have. And mining is the one, but, but it's so incredibly important because we are, to your point, Commissioner Jung, and thank you for this, the most arid state in the nation. And, and I want to thank Mr. Smith. You know, he's, he's really the one that has, has helped to instill a passion, as it were, for me. And, and it's not hard to support things. You know, we had, we had UNR here a few weeks ago and we were giving them a proclamation. And it's, it's so easy to support a group like the Water Innovation Institute and Dr. Pagila because of the great work that is happening every single day over there. And I, I look forward to this plant, and Mr. Smith will come back at some point and tell us where we are with this, with this thought process. But I look forward to this plant being part of that innovation and, and having a research facility attached to it in some way, shape, or form. So it's, it's extremely important. And what you don't realize is this. Every time Mr. Smith goes out and takes a golf course or a greenway or some piece of amenity, I'm going to call it, in our region, turf, when they, when he takes that off of groundwater or, or drinking water and puts it on to reclaimed water, that's, that's water that, that we're able to put back in the system. If you look at this, so when you look at 1991, it's a, it's a million and a half gallons a day, is what it is. MGD, million gallons per day. That works out to 4.6 acre-feet, 325,851 gallons in an acre-foot. And so if you think about that, and gallons kind of confuse people sometimes because when you think about it as an acre, 43,560 square feet, or, or, yeah, square feet, when you think about that acre being covered in one foot of water. And so now what we're going to, what this plant will be producing is nearly 19 acre-feet per day. And so Mr. Smith has done an incredible job, and I think that this is important for us to acknowledge this, he's done an incredible job of managing that effluent until such a time that we can treat it to a very, very, very high quality. And this, this is a Class A plant. Is that, is that correct? When, once, if we can get that water through research, and it's not if, when we get that water to Class A-plus, it can be recycled in our system anyplace, anyplace. And I, and here's why this is so important for me, and then I'll, I'll get off this. At some point, the federal government will require every single plant in the nation to be a Class A-plus plant. I guarantee you. It may not be in our lifetime, but it is, it is, it is, it is coming. I promise you, it is coming. And so the fact that Mr. Smith has supported the Water Innovation Institute and, and really introduced me to them, Mr. Smith, I give you all the credit. You know, you're the, you're the, you're the man behind the curtain. And you've, and you've, and look, and we know this, Commissioners, staff has made this happen. And we have really, really, really great staff. And so I, I cannot give you enough credit. I cannot give your staff enough credit. And I cannot give Dr. Pagila and the Water Innovation Institute and TomWA and Western Regional Water and the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission, I cannot give all of those groups enough credit. So thank you. Commissioner Herman, I had you signed in. I, I saw you and now I, now I don't see you. I don't know whether it's a glitch. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. I thank you very much for being so observant. I just, I, I'm really proud of what you've done down there and that's, I have to give you that. I just wish that you were managing the one in Lemon Valley for those people's sake. So thank you very much for all you do.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. I just wanted to quickly say thank you for the kind words. They are directed at staff, at the team. We function as a team regionally.
Yes.
And we certainly look to our... And we certainly look to our, our, our coach, Dr. Pagila, to help us through these regional challenges and issues. So thank you very much.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion.
So. And seconded.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Jung, second by Commissioner Hill. Thank you so much for the kind words. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes on the screen. Okay, thank you so much. All right, that takes us, Mr. Manager, that's, we're going to do item number nine and just a, a brief overview of this.
Item number nine is the Health District recommends, hang on a second, recommendation to award request for proposal number 319-23 for the Washoe County Health District's name change January 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024, to the Abbey Agency in the amount not to exceed $324,700. And if approved, authorize the purchasing and contracts manager to approve the purchase order, approve the purchase order.
Okay. Mr. Manager, how did the name change come about? Was it the county commissioner, or was it a joint action on all three boards?
It was a joint action of all, of the Reno City Council, Sparks City Council, and the Board of County Commissioners at the most recent concurrent meeting. I can't remember the date of that.
Okay. So that there, there was no confusion in terms of, of, and we, and we see this in a number of places. The Washoe County Health District, are they under the commission's purview?
No, they have their own board, District Board of Health.
Correct. Okay. I just wanted to get that on the record. Did the county commission choose the Abbey Agency?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay. Commissioners, any other comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
Okay, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Manager, would you take us into item number 10?
Item 10 is a recommendation to authorize the creation of a new full-time paralegal position. Pay grade M for the public defender is reviewed and evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee. Authorize the creation of three new full-time deputy public defender, three positions, pay grade T, public, and authorize the creation of one new full-time deputy public defender in position pay grade T, as alternate public defender. And if approved, direct the Human Resources Department to make the necessary staffing adjustments and evaluate, as evaluated by the Job Evaluation Committee, and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary net zero cross-functional budget appropriation transfers. Total fiscal impact is $757,717. The net fiscal impact is zero.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions on this item? Do we need a presentation?
I don't need a presentation, Mr. Chairman, but I just look forward to seeing how we can better serve our community with these positions. So hopefully, maybe in six months, we can get a presentation by the public defender on how, how it's coming along. Thank you.
I'd like that. Yeah. Okay. Commissioner Jung, have you?
I just want to say that I fully endorse and support a public defender. It's what keeps people without means protected with their constitutional rights. And unfortunately, that is not insured unless, in this capitalistic society, you have cash. So I'm a big supporter of public defender and alternate public defender because of the importance of everybody should get fair and square adjudication of any trouble they get into, and it should not be dictated by how much money you have or what fancy law firm you can buy. So public defender all the way, and give them what they need. You give them what they want because you never know if it might be you. So you always, or you're somebody you love. So make sure you have a good public defender and you believe in the right till innocent until proven guilty. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Public Defender. Rough job, but biblical, so you know I love it. Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you, Mr. Ariscotta. We appreciate it. If there are no other comments, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
I will close public comment, bring it back to the board. I'm looking for a motion for item number 10.
Move to approve.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. We have asked for public comment. If there is no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Thank you so much. Item number 12, oh no, excuse me, I'm sorry. I skipped one, Mr. Manager. Item number 11, forgive me.
No problem. Item 11 is a recommendation to approve the acceptance of the Nevada Cares Campus Charitable Fund grant from the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada to support Cares Campus Capital Improvement Project in the amount of $1,669,180 with no match. Retroactively effective November 23rd, 2022 to June 30th, 2024. Authorize the county managers to sign award document and direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget amendments.
I, I have some comments here in just a second, but I'm going to let Vice Chair Hill step in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And what an amazing day for the county commission to be accepting this donation. And I, I just want to make a shout out to Ms. Thomas, who has been sitting on our Capitol campaign. I, I have been participating as well, and I'm very proud that I was able to bring in some donations as well to this. I cannot mention the family's name, but we have so many generous people in our community. And Ms. Thomas really has brought to this board of the, the way that we're going to be successful with our homeless programs is, and getting people housed is if we have a public-private partnership. And I want to give a shout out to the folks who are comfortable with us listing them. And the Montrose Cares Group, they have given us over $1 million. And the Ebbastad Foundation, $500,000. And so just really great community partners. And when we look at models throughout the country, it's, what, what they do is annual fundraising for their homeless programs, because the community needs to also be bought into what we're doing. And today, the campus is what it is, and we inherited it as it is, but we are making huge strides with Phase 2 and Phase 3 to really make it a spectacular place and to get folks the, the care, the treatment, and the services that they need and get them housed. And that's a priority by our staff. So I'm very excited about this acceptance, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me say a few words.
Oh, thank you so much, and thanks for the hard work. I'll, I'll come back to it in just a second. Commissioner Jung.
Well, I didn't know the vice chairwoman was ringing the little Salvation Army bell to get this going, so I'm really excited for you. And I don't think you've ever stopped fundraising. Two years before you got this office, and here she is still, because she just did a big Democrat thing, too. And I'm like, "What are you doing? This is just what you love, special events, arts and culture." So thank you, and thank you, Ms. Thomas. This has been, I know from her perspective, a labor of love, but not a lot of support in terms of how do we start funding this. But I'll tell you, what she's done here is to make sure that we get this funneling coming in, and the vice chairwoman, we actually get the interest off this through these smart people who manage the money. And more importantly, when they see that we're helping the cause, and don't look what you get. It's weird. You get more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. I can't believe it. My mother was right. So it's coming right back around to us, but I know it's tough. And I know it's a tough argument to make, and I know people's compassion has worn. And I think it's because it's got so much better. As I tell you, I walk that river at least once a week. It has become so much better, but you notice people's patience has become less. I've really heard that. And, and I think the key to this is going to be a regional reframing, as the vice chairwoman said, which is, we're all responsible for this, not just the county and not just the municipalities, but every human being here is responsible, because you do have skin in the game with people who are more vulnerable than you, and it is your job to speak up for them because they cannot. And it, it's very much like, I'd like to see another cultural change here in this community, which is where we're all pulling over kids that we know are, that should be in school or not in school. Because when I grew up, and I don't want to sound like an old lady, but you couldn't skip school, because my mother had eyes in the back of her head, and they'd, there'd be five calls. You know, it was a community responsibility that all these kids get an education, they're in school by law, and it's a community responsibility that we invest in the people who are in most need of it at this moment in time. And I will say it again, no matter what situation we're talking about, and there's some sad, sad stories out there, there's still somebody, somebody. And we must never lose sight of that. It's somebody, somebody. And, you know, my husband is a smart mouth, and he'll say, "Well, there's somebody needs to pick them up." Well, they've probably, you know, blew out of those somebodies to take care of them. But we still have to have hope that they can repair that in grace, because remember, the data says the majority of us are two paychecks away from needing to go to the Cares Campus. So don't think you're better than ever ending up there. And, and I believe that you increase the compassion in this community by recognizing you're responsible, too, for them, because they are part of our tribe. They're in the boat with us, they're in the nation with us, they're in the county with us. They're our responsibility. And I'm really proud that we're getting that type of push from people. But I believe, vice chairwoman, nobody would have gave you any money had you not been able to take them on a tour and show, "Look what we've cleaned up." So it's the heavy lift first, and then the money will come in. And you know, you can always count on me to help you with that campaign. I'll make phone calls for you. Thank you. Very proud of what you've done in less than two years. Very proud.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Yeah, I could not agree more. Well done. Well done, Vice Chair. I mean, that's all I can say. But I'm going to back up, and I'm going to talk briefly about the Community Foundation of Northern Nevada and how important they are to our community and, and, you know, people don't realize just how many grants they administrate. I mean, they're, they're a, they're a very, very embedded, prolific organization. But I want to, I want to take a little turn also and just talk about our community for a second. I dare you to find a more benevolent community than Northern Nevada. I dare you. I mean, all you have to do is just look around and see, look at, look at the fundraising that goes on. If you've been to the, the Chapino Feed for the Boys and Girls Club, and you see how people just come out and, and support, and, and this is, and this is due because, this is due, not in part, but because of, of the efforts of, of some of the, the folks that have preceded us, the, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call people out, the Jack Revillios and the Norm DiAndas and the Bob Cachells and, you know, and others that, that have done really, really, really great work, and the Lud Carreros, and, I mean, the list goes on and on and on and on of, of the very, very, very generous families in our community. And I didn't mention, I didn't mention the, the, the families that, that you were able to convince that, that this is, and that's really, that's really part of it. It's convincing these families that, that these are important projects. And is it perfect? Not yet. Do we have a long way to go? Of course we do. Will it ever be perfect? Of course not.
Always true.
Right? But, but that's right. It gives you something to strive for. And, and what I will say is, if you never dare to try, nothing ever gets done. So I'm, I'm, I'm moved by this. This is, this is a substantial amount of money. So let me see. Vice Chair Hill, I have you signed in one more time.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just also want to thank Edon. Mike Kuzmareski pulled this together. He actually hired the fundraising team with Edon Money because he believed in this project so much. The DRP has been an active participant since day one. Reno and Sparks have also been partners in this. And so everyone's calling in their connections, and it's a really robust committee. And certainly, I appreciate the support from this board, but it is a, a lot of people coming together because they believe in this. And so we have more money to raise, and we want to talk to folks who are interested. And we are going out there and hitting the pavement, and I hope to have more donations for this board to accept next year. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And I, I would be remiss if I, I mentioned Jack Revilio, but really, now it's his legacy. It's the Revilio family, and of course, the legacy that Norm DiAnda left with Q&amp;D and all the things that Q&amp;D does in our community as well. So I mean, it's just, my point with this is, is we, we live in, we live in an extremely benevolent community. People that just, I mean, and, and they have proven time and time again with how successful their businesses are. They give away more and more and more, and, and they have proven that you, you know, the community just gives back to them and has grown their businesses. And so it's just, I mean, it is a, it's, it's an amazing place. I'm, I feel blessed to, to live here. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not, sir.
Okay. All right. We will close public comment, bring it back to the board. Looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the donations.
Have a motion by Vice Chair Hill, second by Commissioner Jung. If there is no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe motion carries unanimously. It does. Please affirm your votes. Item number 12, Mr. Manager.
Item number 12 is a recommendation to approve a letter of invitation to the Community Project Funding Congressional Direct Spending, directed spending. The letter of invitation is stating that in the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2022, the United States Congress has made available a grant to Washoe County for the Regional Homeless Shelter Nevada Cares Campus in the amount of $12 million with no county match, administered through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. If approved, the item will authorize the county manager or his designee to designate a county representative for the grant process and direct preparation of a project narrative, direct preparation of a line item budget for the budget, for the project, and complete other required federal forms. And with us today, Mr. Chair, in the chambers is Gabrielle Enfield.
Ms. Enfield, welcome. And I'd be remiss if I didn't start with this. You know, Commissioner Jung always likes to point out rock stars. We're in the midst of one. Your ability to, to, first of all, ferret grants out, that's, sometimes that's the hard part, is just finding them, and then, of course, writing a successful application, making sure that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and all the punctuation is correct. It's, it's extremely important, because, commissioners, as you are well aware, there are hundreds, maybe thousands, of applications for these grants. And so when we get something of this substance, I mean, it's, it's, it's massive. So, Ms. Enfield, welcome.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out for this specific award, this $12 million congressionally-directed spending is a direct result and only possible because Senator Cortez Masto and Senator Rosen supported and submitted our project to Congress for these directed funds. And this is obviously a very significant award, was identified during the very first year of the appropriations. And the funding, this $12 million, will go towards the construction costs for the services building. And I, I don't want to go into a lot, take a lot of your time, but I just wanted to point that out, that this is our first congressionally-directed spending. And a big thank you to Senator Cortez Masto and Rosen for these funds.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Jung, have you signed in first?
Thank you, Ms. Enfield. More importantly, too, with Ms. Enfield is knowing what's worth of a grant to take. She'll tell you right away, "What a waste of time. It's going to cost me $320. Now you're going to have $5 left to administer, you know, to do this." So that is a real skill set that, you know, I have a lot of confidence in what I think I know until I meet the subject matter expert, and they're like, "Hold up, lady, we're not doing that." So I have so much respect for Ms. Enfield. But what's most important, don't forget, again, your vice chairwoman should get the credit for this, because she wines and dines these people. Your, your oldest-serving commissioner, you know me, past 5:00 PM, you'll never see me. I don't like to be out and about. But, but I saw Commissioner Hill talking very in-depthly at the airport extravaganza, of which I was throwing a fit out, of course, again. But she was back at getting this done. And I put that squarely on your shoulders, Commissioner Hill, because you do know how to do this very important work that ultimately benefits this state and this county. And remember, those federal, these, this, we used to call this pork, because they've turned this around again. Now we get to get some, this tiny state with no power and no population, we need those projects, or we get skipped right over. And love them or hate them, Harry Reid, that's how we got lots of stuff directed here because he had that power. And so I'm proud of you, Commissioner Vice Chairwoman. Thank you for the, I think you've paid for your salary for, if you want to stay forever now. And Ms. Enfield, you know what I think about you. Every dollar we spend on you, I would purport we probably get a million dollars back in grants. And, you know, Ms. Enfield has a very good reputation up on the Hill, too, in terms of how to handle this ARPA. I'm sure she was tried to be hired away many times to different counties on how to do this reporting and the deadlines and talk about, again, not a detail gal, you would never want to give me that because it'd be three weeks late and, you know, I don't know, what were we supposed to have it on the agenda? So I know what your value and your worth is, but I, and I, you know, I don't want to take away from Commissioner Herman or the chairman because we have had a little, well, I've said it out loud, we'll be nice to anybody as long as they'll help us at Washoe County, right? With them here, because we want our money, and we don't want it going to some of these bigger states that we still pay our income taxes on. So thank you, commissioners, all of you, because I know it's your good work and your, and your relationship with our congressman who does a good job for us, too. Remember, I told Mr. Amade, I don't care what side you're on, just get us what we need here. And I have to tell you, that's all of your good graces. And I know every little bit of polling makes a big difference. And I'm just really proud that the work that has been done here, and we know this very well, people are begging to come tour, do tours here now of what we've done across the nation. Because it doesn't, it's not a secret for long, especially when your congresspeople, your senators can get you this kind of money. So get ready for more. But this is a lift by all of us. It really is. It's our relationships up and down, and especially those of you that are out there working hard at night after 5:00 p.m., past dark, to make sure that this gets done. I couldn't do it without you, so thank you very, very much. Thank you, Commissioner Hill. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hill, have you signed in next?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioner Jung. So kind. I was so excited to give a tour to Senator Catherine Cortez Masto and Senator Rosen. And this was in the really initial phases before the county had fully taken over the shelter, and they saw the vision of what we were going to do. And what this is going to fund is a building where folks can go to prevent homelessness. This is helping people with rental support. This is helping people with those resources where they don't need to go into the shelter. And so this is going to be a game changer, this building. And I just, I can't thank our senators enough for seeing what was to come and for believing in our local community and seeing that we were committed to this. And I'm so excited that this Phase Three will be amazing and really will help save lives and help our community. So thank you to our senators.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yeah, and I'm thankful for our federal delegation. I appreciate the support. We could not do it without the support of all of our federal delegation. And so this is, when I, the part that excites me the most is no county match. I love that. I just, I'm sorry. I love that. I love that. That's just, it's just like, all right. Thank you so much. Anything else, commissioners? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close public comment, and I will bring it back to the board looking for a motion.
Move to approve the letter of invitation.
Okay. Have a motion by Hill, second by Jung. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That takes us now, Mr. Manager, to item number 13.
Item 13 is a recommendation to approve allocations of American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA funds through the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds for the following projects. First, a recommendation to approve amended allocation of project number two, Washoe County Cares Campus, in a total amount of $24,618,706. An award increase of $3,150,000 over the $21,468,706 approved by the Board December 14, 2021. Additional funds will be used for a portion of the funding of Phase Three, the Cares Campus expansion. Second, a recommendation to approve allocation to fund the purchase of the real property at 1240 East Ninth Street, Reno, Nevada, to the amount of $4.8 million for the purpose of Washoe County's use to provide behavioral health services. And if approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make necessary net zero cross fund and cross-functional budget appropriation transfers. And again, we have, oh, she's not, she's not, she's not at the podium anymore, but I would point out that these are ARPA funds that are being used for these, these projects. And as I think the commission knows, those funds are available to us. They have to be encumbered basically by the end of 2024, spent by the end of 2026. And we see the, these uses as one-time expenditures to support enhanced capacity in the region, especially the 4.8 for the West Hills Campus, Mr. Chair.
No, and thank you, Mr. Manager. Before I turn the floor over to Ms. Enfield, I'm just going to, I'm going to blurt this out. I'm highly supportive of this, commissioners. You've heard me say this before, I don't want a revolving door. I don't want a scenario where we have, where it's just in and out of the campus. We will not be effective, we will not be successful unless we can get most of these folks into some type of a program. And with West Hills closed, having West Hills closed now, this is a perfect opportunity for us to take this over, partner with the sheriff. The sheriff is also excited about this. I've had this conversation with him. This is just, this is so necessary. And I, again, highly supportive of this, and I want to thank our team, I want to thank Mr. Manager for going out and negotiating this. I, you know, it's not a done deal yet, but it, I mean, we're very, very close. And the, just, I think the location with respect to the Ninth Street Campus and just everything, how this is all going to work out, again, I cannot be more supportive. So, Ms. Enfield, I'm sorry, didn't mean to take any thunder.
The first item is an amendment to our existing capital for the Cares Campus to increase the amount to allow for the estimated GMP two. And that's just in order for that we can provide for the bidding process. The second item is specifically for the purchase of the property at 1240 East Ninth Street, and that's the facility for the behavioral health services. If you have any questions, just.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Hill, I have you sign in first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I really appreciate your leadership on the West Hills, or yes, West Hills purchase. And what's so exciting is that we have had a mental health crisis in our state, really, for years, decades, yes. And instead of Washoe County just saying, well, the state, go, go to the state, Washoe County is like, no, we're going to look and see how we can support our local community and really help people heal, and like the chairman said, really change lives here and ensure that they, they don't, if there is a mental health issue, either if there are folks who are homeless, or if there are folks who are your neighbors. We don't really have a place for folks. And so I know in the upcoming budget, we're going to have a discussion about this on how we fund it, but I am really excited that Washoe County is taking the lead on this. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for your leadership.
No, thank you so much. That's, that was very kind words. And this isn't, this is not something I sat up at 2:00 in the morning and had this epiphany on. I mean, this is, this is, this was an obvious one. This is an obvious one for us. And, you know, in, in many cases, we can't stabilize these folks without treating them for drugs and alcohol, for substance abuse. And that's, that's the very, that's the beginning. That's the very beginning. And I, you've heard me say this from this day, lots of times, and that is, you'd be surprised how many of them want out. They want to be clean, they want to be sober, and they just, they don't know the path forward. We had a family member who was in the ER, and, and you'd be surprised how often those people, they just don't know how they got where they are. They have no idea. They just, they just don't, they, they really can't identify a point where, where the, you know, the road forked and they took it. So I'm, I'm, again, so supportive of this, and I want to thank staff for being aggressive. You know, there's, there's, there's a number of people who are interested in this facility, and so I, I feel blessed that Washoe County is first in line. Okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll close public comment, and I will bring it back to the board. Commissioners, looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the allocations, as well as approve the amended allocation for project number two at the Cares Campus and the allocation to fund the purchase of 1240 East Ninth Street.
Have a motion by Hill, second by Jung. We have asked for public comment. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I believe the motion carries unanimously. Please affirm your votes. Okay, thank you so much. Mr. Manager, that takes us now to item number 14.
Item 14 is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No one has signed in, sir.
Okay, we will close public comment, and I'll bring it back to the board. We'll close item 14. That takes us to item 15. Mr. Manager.
Item 15 is commissioners and county managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions' updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Anything else, Mr. Manager?
Happy holidays.
Wonderful. Commissioners, Commissioner Herman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recently, the manager and Ms. Thomas, we went to the Epic Brain Center, and I hope that the rest of the commissioners will all go there and have a, have the opportunity of seeing the miracles that they produce. I talked to Mary Louise about that the other day, and she's, she's already signed up with them. So it would be just really good if you could, I'll set you up if you'd like to. Okay, okay, I'll give you his phone number. Thank you very much.
That's lovely. I'd like to go and take a visit also. Commissioners, anyone else before I jump in? Okay, I want to tell you about one thing. We've been invited, and we'll have to do it in groups of two, of course, so that we don't have a quorum. We've been invited by the Reno Sparks Indian Colony to go over and tour wounded souls extracting from the land and our spirits, and it's an exhibit of the effects of mining. I have not seen it, but I understand it's, it's quite moving. And so I'm, I'm interested in, in going and taking a tour. Michonne Eben, who is the, yeah, yeah, she is, isn't she? She is truly wonderful. Great shout out for Michonne, who is the Cultural Resource Director at Reno Sparks Indian Colony. She's, she's really quite amazing, quite, I mean, just, she's a wealth of knowledge. And she and I were talking the other day how many, how many years we have known each other because of their, their connection in Hungry Valley and out in Spanish Springs. And so we were, we were sort of giggling about this. But, but Michonne has offered to provide tours to anyone that would like them, and so I wanted to make sure that everyone knows that that is available. And if it's, that is for us. For the general public, you can call their office, you can contact their office at 775-785-1326 for more information and to figure out when times, what times they are available. It is open, this will be available until, it's from November 8th, which we've obviously long since passed, but to March 8th, 2023. And it's open Monday through Friday, 11 to 6:00, and some Saturdays, 11 to 3:00, but due to construction, they, it is important that you give them a call and just ask them about it. Okay? Anything else? All right. My final comment is, is the same as the manager's. I hope everyone has a happy holidays. And I say this often, the older I get, an uneventful holiday. Just uneventful. Uneventful. Okay? All right. If there is nothing else, commissioners, we are adjourned. Thank you so much.